Well, what we'll do is call the Bradenton City Council meeting on Wednesday, March 12th, 2025 to order. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
The first item on the agenda this morning is a proclamation, which I'll read on behalf of the mayor. Government Finance Professionals Week, March 17th through the 21st, 2025. Whereas, the Florida Government Finance Officers Association is a professional association founded in 1937 and serves more than 3,300 professionals from state, county, and city governments, school districts, colleges and universities, special districts, and private firms. And whereas, the FGFOA is dedicated to being your professional resource by providing opportunities through education, networking, leadership, and information. And whereas, this Government Finance Professionals Week, sponsored by the FGFOA and all its member governmental organizations, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals and the vital services that they provide to our state and our community. And whereas, during this week, government finance professionals throughout the state of Florida will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 17th through the 21st, 2025, as Government Finance Professionals Week. And extend our appreciation to the government finance professionals here in the city of Bradenton for their dedication to our community. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
All right. Who do we have to accept this? Coming forward. Finance people like to be behind the scenes mostly.
None of us are public speakers here.
So since you jumped up, Heidi, it's your turn. Or Linda.
Don't make her speak. Mayor, council, and Mr. Perry, so this is a good honor, a great honor for us to recognize our finance staff, and you're looking at it. Like, this is the entirety of our finance staff, well minus Maggie, our new hire. Extremely dedicated. You know, they do a lot of work that a lot of people don't see. If you come in on the weekends, I guarantee you, you'll find two of them here. And, you know, Linda and Heidi, in the last several months, have spent tirelessly hours, a number of hours, getting our finances, wrapping up the year-end, getting our act produced, having changes come out of left field from them, a couple invoices that, you know, we delayed on. But they get it all squared away, they tighten it up, they put it in a box, put a bow on it, and for the last 50 years, we've got, we've been recognized for their hard work and dedication. So I just want to show my appreciation and have Heidi come up and say a few words.
I can do it from here, don't worry. I just want to thank you all for the recognition. I have a small but mighty team, and I really appreciate all of their hard work and dedication to the city. Couldn't do it without them.
Thank you. Anyone? Ms. Coker?
I just want, I just wanted to express my personal thank you. I know y'all are unsung heroes, and I know I've been here and been surprised to see you on weekends and evenings, and so, thank you.
Ms. Coachman?
Yeah, I wanted to say the same. So ditto to all of those words, and yeah, I catch y'all here on Saturdays. And Sunday, I think, once, too. Great job. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Ms. Moore?
I want to give you a shout-out for taking something that's super complicated and helping guide us through it. And it's a process, and I don't think any of us could do it without you all. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Kramer?
Thank you for keeping the money moving.
He been payroll. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor Council. I just want to put in my kudos. I worked down the hall, obviously, from these folks and actually watched them work. It's a marvel and a pleasure to watch them work. They're dedicated, they're innovative, some of the things that they're implementing in the past, as well as now into the future, will show great process improvement and efficiencies for the city. When you look at a $200 million budget and the breadth of what we do with that $200 million to serve our community on behalf of our leadership, and the distribution of those funds, the accountability of those funds, major public safety operations, major public works operations and projects, and trying to handle all that, to handle that much with just this staff, is pretty impressive for me. And when I got to the city, I think we were kind of down to like four people, but we, our budget was considerably less, and we did a little bit less, too. At this point, what we do, we do very efficiently. It's award-winning, as Lance talked about, and again, it's so cost-effective and cost-efficient on behalf of the taxpayers, that I would basically put these folks up against any finance, government finance department and say that we get a lot of bang for the buck. So I express my appreciation of them personally and professionally, and keep up the good work. I enjoy working with them.
And the only, the only problem I have is, on Saturdays, when I tell them to go home, they don't listen to me. So, you know, but no, it's, it's great to see, you know, what happens in the city. We kind of get all the outside looks from the public. You guys don't ever get the kudos that you deserve, because one of the things that we've done, especially in my five years as mayor now, or coming up over five years, is we've got a lot of projects on the board and a lot of things going on that this council is really supporting and going through compared to the previous five or 10 years. So we appreciate the effort, because there's a lot of moving parts, and without you, they wouldn't keep moving, because they wouldn't get paid. So keep up the great work, and we really appreciate it. And speaking for Ms. Barnaby, she's under the weather today, but I know she'd be up here giving you the kudos, too. So thank you very much, and keep up the great work. So, thank you. Want to get a picture real quick? Come up here, and we'll stand up behind you. Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Our next proclamation is Sunshine Week, March 16th through the 22nd, 2025. Whereas, James Madison, the father of our federal constitution, wrote that consent of the governed requires that the people be able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives. And whereas, every citizen in our participatory government has an inherent right to access government meetings and public records. Whereas, an open and accessible government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust and confidence in their government and in the government's ability to effectively serve its citizens. And whereas, the protection of every person's right of access to public records and government meetings is a high priority of the city of Bradenton. And whereas, the city of Bradenton is committed to openness and transparency in all aspects of its operations and seeks to set a standard in this regard. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 16th through the 22nd, 2025, as Sunshine Week. And will ensure our citizens continue to have public access to government records and information, to increase information provided online and electronically, and to ensure that all meetings of deliberative bodies under its jurisdiction and their committees are fully noticed and open to the public. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. And who do we have coming forward for this? Mr. Bill Ackles? And staff? Of one?
It's been said, or it's been told to me, Florida's open access laws are some of the most complex and open in the world. I don't know about the world, but I do know this is a responsibility that in the state of Florida, you don't take it lightly. In my years as the RMLO, each of you has expressed that commitment to open government time and time again. And so, mayor, city council, Mr. Perry, Mr. Williams, our legal counsel, administrative staff, my trustee, willing or unwilling protege, I don't know, everybody here at the city that works so hard to ensure that the records laws in this state are adhered to fairly inequitably to everybody. Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. And I know that there's a lot of things that happen that, you know, maybe aren't as pleasant every day, that you get blamed for or don't get blamed for, but one of the things I'm impressed with is we have nothing to hide. And people may come up and say that, or they may email that, but if there's a record, it's going to get gotten in the right way to that person. And it's very important to maintain that integrity, and you do that every day. So thank you for taking care of that. So, yes. Vice Mayor Kramer?
As someone who's worked with you quite a while, I want to commend you on your composure, because it is quite often that people who are requesting public records, or not requesting, they're demanding, and they demand them right then. And they think that somehow you or all of us are magically able to create these records and have them at our, in our backpacks or something. Thank you for keeping your cool in the face of outside pressures.
I'm glad I'm doing that. Sometimes I'm not so sure.
Mr. Williams?
So I just kind of want to reiterate everybody's appreciation. Mr. Ackles does a phenomenal job with the public, as Vice Mayor said, and he's very to the letter of the law. And it's very, you know, there's no, there's no emotion in it, it's just very matter-of-fact, and we're going to get the information that's requested. And he does a phenomenal job of tracking it, making sure he follows through with it, making sure our directors and leaders provide the information that's been requested. Very dedicated individual. Have him on a couple of special projects because of his dedication and attention to detail. And then Maraville, as he mentioned, is protege. So at some point, Bill will retire. Hopefully, not too soon, but we have, you know, we want to make sure that we have somebody that is trained by Bill to make sure that that legacy continues throughout the city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Coker?
Just, I want to definitely, you know, it's a big responsibility, and as you mentioned, the Florida law is very complex, and you have such a command of it. It allows me to sleep at night knowing that I'm covered. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's get up here and get a picture. Right there, you guys get right in the middle. Push, maybe push the microphone down there. You help with that all the time, too. Madam Clerk?
There are not any presentation scheduled today?
All right. Thank you. And now we'll go to citizen comment. Citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda item, agenda item, future agenda item, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time. And today, we only have one public hearing, but the second item is not a public hearing, it's only a first reading. So we have one citizen comment at this time, which will be by Patrick Penechek. Please come forward, state your name, your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. Patrick Penechek, 109 23rd Street, Bradenton. Wanted to just comment on a couple items. One, as you mentioned, items that either on the agenda or soon to be on the agenda. But first, I want to talk about the Sunshine Week proclamation. I really hope that soon we change the arbitrary rule of three minutes speaking. There are some people that need more time to communicate their message in whatever fashion, and I think although there needs to be limits, the three minutes is much too constraining for this process. Want to talk today about proposed ordinance 4058, which is a chicken ordinance. Decisions, I realize that many of you have opinions, and maybe have already made up your mind on the March 12th and 26th proposed ordinance. However, wanted to just cover a few facts. Although there may be many opinions or decisions, I can assure you that we've lived with this experiment, this beta experiment, for the last seven months, with having chickens in our backyard. We chose to move from Florida, from the north. I also have property in Tallahassee and a few other areas, but we wanted to come to Bradenton, because it is a friendly city. We were assured that our outside space is living space in Florida. It's not. Under this example, we have chicken smells, chicken feces floating in our pool during floods and heavy rains. We have roosters crowing, and roosters, and maybe even chickens, I'm not sure, but we can assure you that that takes place almost on a daily basis, and for sure on the weekend at early morning hours. So that peaceful possession is in danger. I realize that some people desire an agrarian lifestyle, one that allows more connection with nature. I've lived that lifestyle, where livestock and poultry are abound, but that's not the city of Bradenton. By my observation, most lots in Bradenton are one-quarter to, one-fifth to one-quarter acre. That's 8,712 square foot to 10,000. Forty percent of those lots are consumed by homes, driveways, or sidewalks. There's really not room for chickens in this environment. With 44 seconds left, I'll just get to my point. I'm opposed to this ordinance for many reasons, but I also think it's pretty much discriminatory in that single-family residence is in the proposed ordinance, meaning if I live in an apartment, a duplex, or a condo, you're not going to afford me that rent. And I'm probably the one, if I'm in that environment, that could most financially benefit from the raising of livestock or poultry, in this case, chickens. So I would like to improve the quality of life in Bradenton, not degrade it. And I would not, I would request in my final three minutes, three seconds here, that you not approve this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no other citizen comment. So, Madam Clerk? There's any comments? Anyone want to make any comments? I'm sorry. And that will be possibly discussed. All right, Madam Clerk?
Item six is the consent agenda, and we will be moving item B to item A, and item A to item B. So it's just switching the two, the order. So staff is requesting approval of item A through S.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Items A through S?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Carries four to zero. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
At this time, I'll administer the oath. Anyone wishing to speak during the following public hearing, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the factual statements and representations which you are about to give to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Dong.
Good morning. PowerPoint opened up.
We've been through many of these, I believe, so...
Many more to come, so...
I think there's, kind of, we know kind of what it is, and it's...
Yeah, so this is a request, again, for a sidewalk cafe with alcoholic beverages at 316 12th Street West, and this is Resolution 25-24, and planning case PLN-SUP-24-0007. Here's just some basic, quick information of the property. This is Jack's Wing Company, new business in downtown Bradenton we're happy to have. It is in the T5 zoning district with an urban core future land use. He currently does not have a sidewalk cafe, unlike the other ones you've seen, but he would like to have that opportunity to place one out there in the future.
Mr. Dong, that business that was there before?
They had one.
They used it.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, but we don't transfer these, so going on ahead, and he's getting a new one. So here's just a quick location map of where the business is located. City Hall is actually right up here to the, on the upper right-hand corner. And here's just a proposed layout. The area is 15 by 10, or 15 by 19. He will be putting out four tables with eight chairs. There'll be no busing or hosting stations. He is requesting that allow two tables remain on the sidewalk when the business is closed. They'll be placed adjacent to the building and locked together. Mr. Joshua Hatch is here right now. I'm going to have him come up real quick. He is the owner of Jack's Wing Company, and he can talk real briefly about his proposal. And if you have any questions for him, then I'll come up and wrap it up.
Okay, thank you. Just please state your name and your city of residence.
Joshua Hatch in Palmetto, Florida.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any comments? Or I don't know that there's probably too many questions, because we've been through many of these.
Pretty straightforward. I mean, it's not something we want to use on a day-to-day basis. Obviously, if it's not being used for a couple of days at a time, we'd bring it inside. We have a storage facility set up with Tom, the building owner, already, so we can get it off the street, so it's not an ISO when it's not being used, just tied up all the time. It just gives us the ability to have that little bit more visibility with the public, especially when we're doing farmers' markets, other events on Main Street. It just gives us a little bit more outside seating, and also a place we don't allow animals inside, because we are a full restaurant. And so it gives a seating for people with animals outside to kind of hang out there, too. And then, just as a side note, we are a beer and wine only, so we are not a bar. We are a restaurant with this, that beer and wine license.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will run through this pretty quickly, since we've seen a few of these in the past. Here's just a quick zoning map. T5 zoning, as mentioned before. Future land use is urban core. Here's the sidewalk definition, or sidewalk cafe definition. It's basically where food and beverage is served from an adjacent cafe or restaurant. In this case, it'd be Jack's, and it is where the patrons are seated outside, enjoying their food and beverages. Sidewalk cafes are actually permitted use in the T5 zoning district, with the exception that if you do have alcoholic sales, you have to have a special use permission through city council, and that is why we are here today. There is also a 20-seat limit, and he is below that calculation at a total of eight. Here's just a quick site plan again, that I had up before, showing the layout. Here are some photos of the business. He does have the bumpout, which is kind of nice. It's kind of hard to see on this photo, because it kind of blends in, but the car is parked up against the bumpout, so there will be some tables out in this area here, and also up here. So he'll have the five-foot minimum traversable space, which meets our code and ADA requirements. The comprehensive plan just talks a little bit about encouraging sidewalk activity, including sidewalk cafes. And under policy 1.2.5, it does talk about that minimum five feet of clearance on the sidewalks. These are just some areas out of our land use regulations. When it goes from the Form 8 Code to the land use regulations, talking about sidewalk cafes, seating, talks a little bit about having maintenance of the sidewalk, which we do have our teams downtown keeping our sidewalks looking great all the time. But there's also some things in here about assurance and insurance indemnification agreements. There's a lot listed under land use regulations that need to be met, shouldn't the approval of a sidewalk cafe be passed by city council. There are some general standards under 3.3.1 of the land use regulations. Again, this falls under the special use category. With the downtown area being built, it is a little difficult for these property owners to meet some of these, such as landscape separations. So we kind of moved past those, but there are other ones that need to be met under 3.3.2. He does meet these items. And then we'll move on to really the criteria that city council and also planning commission need to use when they make their decision on sidewalk cafes with alcoholic beverage sales. And that's under 3.3.2.5. It talks here about, a little bit about ingress and egress, you know, location and design of refuse, which is already established in this area. Talks about utilities, screening and buffering, signage. All of these items are met by the applicants when we have these come forward through planning commission and city council. And item K is the consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. Responses to these criteria are also put in the staff report, and so you have it on record with your city council packet. So, under Resolution 25-24, city council is encouraged to evaluate the request based on the provided criteria, as well as input from staff, the applicant, and the public. It is in staff's opinion that this request is consistent with Section 3.3.2.5 of the land use regulations, and also the design element of the comprehensive plan. Planning commission did meet on February 19th to review this case. They did recommend 4.0 to approve it with stipulations, and these stipulations are very similar to what you've seen before, with the exception of C, where he is only requesting for two tables to remain on the sidewalk. But with this one, is they have to get their indemnification agreement back to the city within 30 days. I've already sent that off to Mr. Hatch to start that process, that they maintain the clear pedestrian pathways of five feet on the sidewalk, and that includes for seating and tables. That the property owner obtain all necessary licenses from the state. Sometimes there is an extension of premise license that is required if you're having sales of alcohol on the sidewalk, so they need to make sure he has that in hand. We do have the team, like I said, that cleans the sidewalks downtown, but if he does decide to do any sidewalk cleaning, that any solution be reviewed and approved by the public works department. And if there's any increase in the seating of the sidewalk cafe, that city council will approve it. And that is pretty much what I have.
Questions?
Short and sweet.
Comments?
Apologies if I talk fast.
All right. So we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I move to approve Resolution 25-24 with the stipulations recommended by staff.
All right. And I hear a motion by Mr. Vice Mayor Kramer, and seconded by Mrs. Coachman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward one?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Carries four to zero. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Item 7B is the first reading for ordinance 4058, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter 14, Article 1, Section 14-4 of the city's Code of Ordinances relating to keeping live poultry, allowing for the keeping of chickens pursuant to the terms and conditions contained herein, providing for permit requirements, providing for penalties for violations, providing for codification, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing for ordinance 4058 is scheduled for March 26th.
Okay. All right. I know, and we heard the gentleman talk under citizen comment, so I think there, you know, is going to be probably some more discussion on this at the meeting when we come down to the public hearing. So, and if there's adjustments or changes or things like that, that can be done at that time as well, to the ordinance. And I talked with Ms. Singer about that earlier. So, you know, we'll probably get more comments, and it'll be important to listen and try to come up with a plan that meets, you know, all neighbors and neighborhoods and that from what it's going to be. So, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item AA is the emergency procurement report.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'm here to give the emergency procurement report, and I think it's good to give you a little bit of background on these emergency purchases themselves. They basically started after Hurricane Milton. I think the first one was 10/6/24, and now here we are, really going through the three that came in since the last council report. And you're looking at a total of probably 50 items that had to be addressed as emergency purchases that were related to the storm season that we experienced. Out of those 50 items, a rough estimate of cost is about $4 million, probably, in repairs. The reimbursements for those costs will come in two forms, generally speaking. That is going to be through our inland insurance policy, because we have property damage insurance for inland marine coverage. And so when you look at roof repairs and the like, there's a whole list that Public Works and some of these finance people that were in here earlier have been putting together to go through our insurer. We've had several meetings, including last week, with the insurers themselves, who have, I believe it's about 17 claims or so, that are related to the storms, and there's multiple types of repairs in those storms. So the first thing that's required, because FEMA will not reimburse if you have private insurance, items A through G, which I won't get into, but those are the reimbursable FEMA categories, is the insurance. And so, the good news is, is that we do have insurance for a good amount of these losses. There's deductibles and minimum manatories for various ones, that FEMA will reimburse the deductible in certain cases. So the safety net here, in the fallback position, is the FEMA... So the safety net here, in the fallback position, is the FEMA reimbursement. As you know, and we've discussed categories A and B, which is basically debris hauling and also protective measures, were expedited reimbursements. And so the city tries to get at least 50% of that money back very quickly, and we have, actually. That total was on the order of about 6, 7 million. So if you remember at council, Mr. Williams gave a report where he estimated probably about 10, maybe a little bit more, in damages to the city and total costs related to these storms, 10 million, that is. These emergency purchases represent probably about 4 million in total, just as an approximation of me looking at the list of those 50 items. We have received some partial payments from the insurer. They're working on some claims, and they will be rapidly paid, opposed to FEMA that has a more protracted type of reimbursement. But moving to the claims today and emergency purchases, we have three, basically, on 3/3/2025. We have clarifier number 3, and that is $106,000 repair to clarifier number 3. In that particular instance, our clarifiers continue to this day to have problems with processing solids. And some of that is an engineering deficiency, where the clarifier can't waste to the digesters. And so if it can't process it, it puts the solids back into the oxidation carousel, which is the first phase of wastewater management. Don't want to do too deep a dive. And so that's slowing our ability to do it. What this particular expenditure is for is to connect the clarifier to advanced digestive processes at the plant. And really, the way you do it is by putting a fairly large 8-inch pipe between clarifier 3 over to the digester and connectivity to the other digester. So you have connectivity, and you're fully completing the solids removal process. Paul Kent, who's the contractor on our new clarifier, gave us a bid for this, and it came in at 106,000. That piping is all over ground. It doesn't have to be trenched and laid in underneath. And it involves both 250 feet of piping, a series of valve fittings, and the labor associated with it. So that's that particular matter. We believe it will considerably help us with the processing and removal of solids, ultimately leading to, back to getting the plant fully functional as a matter of its processing capacity. And that's an important thing. The second item is March 4, 2005, which is lift station pumps. Again, our lift stations took pretty severe damage throughout the storms. Some of them were underwater for prolonged periods at times. And that puts strains on the electrical components. One of the biggest electrical components in a lift station is the pumps themselves. This $91,000 purchase was for two pumps. Those are 440-volt pumps for a total of 880 in capacity. If you think about it, most of the stuff in your house runs on about 110 electricity. This is very high-capacity pumps that pump millions of gallons per day capacity. And so that is for the lift station improvements, and that was done by Barney's Pumps, a pumping company who we contract with. Lastly, on 3/5/2025, Mr. Bruner discovered and made repairs to the metal siding and flashing on the roof and fascia sides of some of our buildings over at the sanitation department off of 17th Avenue. Barely minimal purchase there, $4 million, probably completely coverable with our inland marine policy itself.
How much was that, Mr. Perry?
That was $4,623.
You said 4 million, so...
I am so sorry. The millions and the thousands sometimes get a little bit connected, right? But...
I knew what you meant.
Yeah, I'm sure he did, right. And I have to report this to you weekly, which I've tried to do fairly diligently. I try to provide you additional information, so with some background, obviously, that kind of does a deep dive on things, as to the repair itself, the reimbursability of it, the cause of it, and where we move from here as far as the benefits. That information is required for all emergency purchases pursuant to our policy for purchasing, 2/37.2. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
All right, so questions will come, and then, but then we'll ask for a motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
Right, so I...
I don't even think that's necessary. Under the purchasing policy, you had Tamara shaking her head. I have to give a report. I authorize these, based on the emergency...
Right, and that's the thing. So is there any comments before I get a couple?
I actually have a question.
Yes.
With regard to those clarifiers, is that probably original design flaw? Or is this something that, is this gonna be a Band-Aid? I mean...
It's a great question. I think I would characterize it, and again, as I have said probably 100 times in the last few months, I'm not an engineer. But as I'm told by the engineers, and this was recommended by Jacobs Consulting, too, from an engineering perspective, from our internal engineering folks on the environmental engineering side, that for whatever reason, that clarifier did not waste and did not have connectivity to waste. And so, as I talked about earlier, what it does is it rejects the waste that is in process back into the oxidation carousel, which causes another problem. You'd probably, to get deeper than that, have to talk with an environmental engineer that understands what's called mixed liquor, because that's the phase. And it's not the kind of liquor you would drink at a social club. It's actually liquor that is a term in environmental engineering talk that refers to microbiology processing.
Well, I think one of the things that I've learned, and going to that question, because asking a lot of questions on that, is are we Band-Aid it? Are we fixing it? Are we doing it? Obviously, we've got a clarifier going in the ground now that's a lot larger that will help some of that, that will be with the updated technology that's out there now. But to probably, and what I understand it to be, is the volume, when it goes through, if the volume is normal, it should work. But with the volume being so escalated at times, that's what's not working. So, yes, and I agree with that question, that is it gonna be a Band-Aid, or is it gonna be fixed? This is a Band-Aid to get it fixed. And, because we put a Band-Aid on, when you take it off, you hope it's healed. And this will be one of those things. Mr. Perry, you can kind of weigh in on that.
I think you described it pretty well, exactly what it is. It was probably a design flaw where there should have been connectivity. But one of the problems with those solids is, is that the solids come into the plant every day. And so there's a certain level of solids. As you're trying to get some out, you're always having some come back in. And the microbiology, basically, of the activated sludge part of a mixed liquor plant is that microorganisms will help break that down and eat the solids, basically. And if you have dead and ineffective microorganism, it basically contributes to the solids. The solids blind the filters, ultimately create blankets, and ultimately, as a result of that, can cause overflow with the clarifier. Is that about right?
One o'clock in the morning, when you're watching the overflow.
Right.
It's very interesting. But one of the things that, again, shows collaboration is when we had some of our microbiology get overwhelmed, and then the county came in and helped us. But then we had the back-to-back stuff and all of that, and the plant was sick. So now it's getting better, but it's taking a little bit more time, because it got too sick, because of the threat to it, which was the three, you know, people want to talk about two hurricanes. We really had three major events. And the first major event is what put us behind the eight ball in Debbie, but...
We reseeded that plant, as Mayor's talking about. One day before, I think it was Helene came back. No, actually, it was in between Helene and Debbie.
Right, but it was the massive rain.
We had those massive rains, right. And as we were out there at 1:00 in the morning, you could see the microorganisms, which are a darker color, coming over the top. And so we reseeded the plant, and it didn't work because of so much volume. I mean, you're talking about a plant, again, I always say is rated at 9 million, averages about somewhere between 6 and 7 million gallons per day. And we were processing 25 to 30 million gallons at high-volume flows, as the mayor pointed out, for volume. It kind of all connects together, and you'd have to probably talk to an operator or an engineer for any more in-depth conversations.
Right. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I was gonna bring it up in my ward comments. I'm getting, you mentioned lift station pump purchasing, and I'm getting a lot of inquiries regarding the area of Ward 4 that was negatively impacted by the season. Questions regarding what we're doing to prepare for the upcoming storm season? And in the ward comments, I was gonna suggest that maybe we have a, you know, a presentation to let people know what we're actively doing for the upcoming storm season. Lift station 13, I've been getting a lot of comments about that, because actually, thank you to whoever tidied it a little bit. It still is very unattractive looking. So it still needs a lot of work, but I do appreciate the cleanup effort. And it was certainly underwater. And so, it's not really a question, but more of maybe a request that in a future meeting, we can have some kind of presentation as to what we're doing actively for the upcoming storm season in regards to the plant, the lift stations, because I'm getting those kind of questions.
Yeah, and I'll go to that, Mr. Perry.
Yes, sir.
Everyone recently, last week, got about some workshops and different things. So that's something that I wanted to see what dates in April and May, because we may want to try to have three or four on different times of what's gonna, and I've asked the staff to look into that, because obviously you and I get a lot of those together in emails and talking to them. And, you know, they don't feel like they've seen activity. There's been a lot of behind-the-scenes. And, again, and I know it happens more in Ward 2 and Ward 4, that the tide's the tide. You know, the pipes are clean, but the tide's the tide, and unfortunately, we don't control the tide, especially when it's a king tide, which we're having more of. But, you know, we need to show that. And even, we've got cameras that are going out still and camering the lines and making sure they're clean. But that is a process that we're working through, and that's why I wanted to have a workshop, because, again, this is more, you can get a report in this, but it's not the deep dive where we can do in a workshop, so... But nope, good question. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make a statement. It's not really about the lift stations, but the gentleman that was in here earlier, speaking about the chickens and the smell, think about the people who live around the water treatment plant. I'm not too far from it, from one of them. And all of that liquor and microorganisms and solids, yeah. But I think we do a pretty good job considering what's all there to minimize any discomfortable smells. But it's worse than chickens.
One thing that I think that, and Ms. Moore and others, not just you, but it was, when you talk about what's gonna happen with these lift stations, there may be some properties that we have to purchase close to those, that are homes now, that if they're for sale, it might be worth purchasing and making that as a pump station on that property. But the neighbors are gonna have to understand, it's, you gotta have the best of both, or the worst of both, whatever you wanna say. But I think there's some opportunity to look at that and say, okay. Or do you have to close a street to make it happen? And that's gonna be something that is, we gotta make it better. But making it better might also hurt a little bit in some ways, yes.
I have been, I agree with you, and it might be a little painful, but I do think that, you know, like I always say, in hardship, I try to find an opportunity. And I communicate when I see parcels that are listed for sale or have a for-sale-by-owner sign. I have been in the habit of sharing that with Mr. Williams and sometimes even Ms. Clayback, so that they can analyze whether they'd be useful for that function.
Nope, perfect. All right, any other questions, Mr. Perry, on that? All right, moving forward. Madam Clerk?
Settlement of Backflow Claim and Acquisition of 504 9th Avenue West.
Mr. Perry?
Mayor Council, item 8B, which is the settlement of Backflow Claim. When you talked just recently about having to purchase property, this is a property that we have to purchase. This particular home is a small residential property located at 504 9th Avenue West. It had a past history of annual flooding from lift station 17. Lift station 17 is a master lift station. It processes somewhere on the order of plus 2 million gallons a day. This particular home is, has a main line transmission from the lift station only 40 feet away. And so what happens is that when that area floods, the lift station backs up. And the grade in that area is, I think, probably around 12 feet above seat level, and the water table is fairly close to 12 feet above sea level, too. So with rain-type of flooding, that will contribute to the lift station becoming overwhelmed. When that happens, it backs up into this home. Again, it's flooded several times in the past, because it's a low-lying area, because of the engineering design. It was only 40 feet away. You'd say, why would people put a connection box within 40 feet of a master lift station? And I think the answer may be is because a railroad track is very, very closely related to it. We actually did an engineering review of it to see if we could reroute that particular lateral to the home along with the transmission line, and it would require about a 400-foot relocation. And so that would be quite costly, too. We initially had negotiations with the landowner, because when we flooded her out, we got an appraisal for the property that was roughly about, I want to say, $190,000, $200,000, which was, I believe, a fair appraisal in that particular neighborhood for that type of property. However, there was also an over $50,000 loss of personal property in the home, and it was documented with photographs. It was flooded fairly high with wastewater, not just rainwater. And to that extent, we took a look at it and say, well, let's take a look, basically, at purchasing it. We were unsuccessful to negotiate with that individual, and she obtained an attorney. We actually filed a condemnation proceeding to eminent domain take the property. And under the take laws of eminent domain in Florida, we would be responsible for paying all costs associated with the homeowner's defense of the valuation of the property. What that means is we would have to pay for her lawyer. We'd have to pay for all of her hydrology experts, her engineering experts and the like. And a court would decide whether our appraisal was adequate. When you combine that with the property damage, with these legal fees and associated costs, we submit it, basically, an application to purchase the property for $290,000. We have a contract to do that thus far. We're gonna provide that individual a certain amount of time to get out of the home. We've been paying for her temporary housing as well, through a variety of different funding sources. The funding for this settlement will come through, basically, the utility reserve fund, which we do have funding for. And ultimately, I don't think we'll be surplusing that property. I think we'll probably be redesigning some sort of mitigation program with the use of that property. So that's where we're at on this one.
All right, questions? Yes, ma'am.
Well, it's really more of a statement. I'm glad we were able to work something out and not necessarily go the hard way, because, I mean, it was the lift station that was causing the problem for them. So playing the little hardball and all that, but I'm glad it's working out. It's not the first time we've paid more for the value of something, because it's so important. So I'm just glad it worked out, and I've watched that home for years. It's gone through some changes. And I'm glad that it's working out. Now we can fix, face and fix.
Face and fix it, yeah. That's one of the loose ends of that campaign, I think, is that type of problem, right?
Yeah, well, one of the things, though, and obviously being involved with Mr. Perry and staff that's done a great job at communicating and working with the family, but they purchased the house knowing it had had other issues with it previously from another family member. So it wasn't that they didn't know that that happened, but, and that's why, you know, I was impressed with Mr. Perry, is he would bring it to me and ask me questions about what I thought, or go through it. But I thought, you know, our first offer was pretty fair, and it, but to do it without having to go through all the lawyer parts of it and all the rest of it, and is, you know, the right thing to do. But also, it's been something that was previous owner, which was a family member of this family member, knowing. And it was an issue that was gonna continue no matter what, even if we fixed it without thinking it was fixed. Because as we know, stuff doesn't flow uphill. It flows back.
And we would've had to remediate the house, and we actually got, I think, two or three estimates for remediation costs. And they were in the $75,000, I think was the low one.
Which it was gonna happen again if, and this was before the storm, so this really didn't have anything to do with the storm.
And to come to the family's defense that bought it from their family member, in some situations, when people don't have a lot, you know, keeping family property in the family, even though it may not be a million-dollar mansion, it's important to them. So to their defense, that they bought something that was damaged, but it was because, I mean, it was probably the best they could do at that time. But I'm glad we're working it out, and it's, you know, more civil. But I'm glad we're working it out, and it's, you know, more civil than going.
So you need a motion for this?
Yeah, we do need a motion for this, and, and again, I, you know, I, I try not to get out in front of my skis when I do these kinds of expenditures that put the city on the hook for this kind of money. I, I want you to know the, the full aspect of it. I don't sign contracts or do other things that I, I don't think are in the interest of the city and, and authorized, so I want you guys to know that there's a pretty compelling reason on this one.
Mrs. Coachman.
Yes, Mayor, um, motion to authorize city administrator to effectuate the, the settlement of the claim and purchase of the property located at 504 Ninth Avenue West for the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars and to execute settlement and transactional documents associated therewith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vice Mayor Kramer. Any other comments?
Just lastly on that, Your Honor, it has been reviewed by legal. We had Mr. Van Etten from Plaurock Office, as well as Mr. Rudesel, kind of be involved in that, and, uh, there's a settlement agreement that waives any and all claims against the city, uh, in relationship to this, so it is the end of the road here.
All right, so we have a, a motion by Ms. Coachman, second by Vice Mayor Kramer, to approve. We'll start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Carrie's four to zero, thank you. And again, Mr. Perry, I'll say to you and everyone that worked on that, I know it was back and forth and emotions get high, but thank you for doing what you did on that to, to get it settled, and it's a fair price for everybody. I really think it is. So, um, all right, Madam Clerk?
We do not have anything listed under unfinished business.
Counsel reports. Starting Ward Five.
Oh, no. Okay, uh, wow, um, our meetings are always interesting. It doesn't matter how much is on the agenda. Um, I, first of all, want to remind everyone that the, okay, let me find it, the Angola Festival is coming up, and, okay, glasses, it's this
Rescheduled from
Yes, it had been rescheduled, um, it's March fifteenth and sixteenth, and it's at Manatee Mineral Springs Park, and, um, it's always been really, really fun and, and festive, and, and it, it, it has a very deep heritage to it, and, um, I'm just glad that they were able to reschedule it. All right, and also, I just kind of wanted to make a comment, um, you know, the, when the gentleman spoke earlier and, and he referred to us as being the friendly city, um, sometimes it seems like, y- yeah, we are the friendly city and sometimes not. Uh, we're friendly to some and maybe not so friendly to other, but that's because you can't please everyone. But I'm very, very appreciative of how we worked that out with that family. Um, in low-income areas, we can't think about why someone bothers to purchase something compared to how we would, well, I think, we, we might think if we are in different situations. Um, spending that money is, is, is well-spent. We, we find one point two million to pay a consultant to tell us the best thing to do in terms of a very large project, and I think we need to keep in mind that when that project is complete and looking all nice and shiny, we have our employees, our staff, that has to maintain it, our Public Works, law enforcement, to keep it safe, uh, because it is in an area, and I'm talking about City Park, it is in an area that requires a lot of care, uh, and, and requires a lot of the services that make us the friendly city. So I, I don't, I, I don't know why it was on my mind or on my heart to talk about it, but I just feel like if we're going to be the friendly city to our citizens, we also need to make sure we're the friendly city to the people who work here. Um, we're friendly to people who live, work, and play in the city of Bradenton, so I think we need to really look at how we finance department find money so that we can really let our employees that do the work, that makes us the friendly city, make them feel like we care that they do that. Okay, I don't know why that was on my heart, but it was just on my heart. Uh, other than that, Ward Five is alive.
All right, Ward One.
Uh, not too much. I just did want to give a big thank you to Public Works for finding us a location on the west side for the recycling bin. I was over there yesterday. It was looking good. Hopefully it will stay that way. I spoke to the neighbors, told them that we, you know, we were going to try to be on top of not allowing the illegal dumping. Um, so thank you to Public Works for finding something on the west side, because it was definitely missed. Um, also, it, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Pirates. Went to the game yesterday. It was a great game, a lot of fun, a lot of happy people there. The stands were filled, um, so I want to encourage the public, if you don't have to take the opportunity to go to a game, it's a lot of fun. I think, uh, I think our history with baseball here in this community is really one of the little jewels in our crown, uh, crown and our, jewels in our crown, I guess. Um, and I, and I, even if you're not a huge sports fan, i- it really is fun to see the kids out there, and the players are just so generous with their time, and, and you can tell that they appreciate our city here, so I just, um, want to thank, you know, all the historic, um, efforts that have been done to, to make Pirate, the Pirates and, and Lee Comfield what it is, and, um, encourage the public to enjoy it as well, because it really is nice. And, um, that's it.
All right, Ward Three.
Thank you, sir. Um, want to remind everybody that, uh, in addition to spring training games, next week is spring break for Manti County Schools, so
I forget that.
Uh, that's all right. I just, I knew you were here. I felt it coming from you. You just forgot to mention it. Um, you're thinking about what you're going to be doing, I think is probably it.
Yes.
Um, but be mindful, there's, uh, traffic might not be quite as heavy, but you might see a lot more children out and about, so be careful getting around town. Um, last week at my other job, uh, we had an event, uh, where we had to declare code red on our campus. I want to thank the chief and her personnel, uh, the sheriff's office and their personnel, and actually a father who is, uh, a K nine with St. Petersburg Police Department, who heard about it and came down to assist. And, uh, I just want to thank them all for helping, uh, a safe outcome. It was a long day. It was a situation we haven't had there before, and I know the school district's dealt with it quite a few times, um, and they even, Braden Christian's recently gotten a few, but, uh, I'm, I'm happy to say everything came out well at the end. Um, I want to wish a happy birthday to Bailey. He was, uh, his dad, you met, I think a couple of you met his dad at the game the other night, and I think it may be somebody else's birthday up here right now.
Oh.
Ooh.
If Mrs. Barbe was here, I'm sure we'd be singing. But that's up to the rest of the council, if they want to sing or not. I will lead if necessary.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Thanks, Mayor Kramer. Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Councilman Kramer. Um, I, uh, I was going to mention the Back to Angola Festival. I am also going to be attending. I completely echo your sentiments about the importance of honoring our history. Um, I have an upcoming tour of the wastewater treatment plant on Friday that
Ooh.
I'm excited about. Weird to say that, but it had to be rescheduled when I was ill, and I appreciate it. Right, muck boots, which of course I have. Um, I wanted to give, uh, Mr. Scott Williams a shout out. I know he's not here right now, but his supervisor is, and, um, I've personally, he has been of great assistance to me, and I know that many of my neighbors have also given me compliments on, um, I've had to refer people to him, and he has been very attentive and provided good information, um, so I just really appreciate his efforts to help people as they kind of continue to rebuild and figure out what they're going to do with their, um, properties, so kudos to him. Um, and then the, the last thing, um, actually, and I apologize, because I am going to be kind of surprising the chief about this question. Um, and I, I don't think that Officer Gideon is here, but I've been getting, and I don't know if you all have been, but I have been getting a ton of commentary on the red light camera, um, thing, and I wanted to just point out a couple of things that I've been hearing about the program to see if maybe, you know, my, my observation is that it's probably like a work in progress, is my guess, and I know that it's a vendor that we employ, so I'm thinking that maybe there's just some things that we might have to tweak with the vendor. Um, but the comments that I was getting that are concerns involve, I don't know if there's a way to notify people, um, I've heard from at least two single moms who received several tickets in a short amount of time, so not enough, you know, they get the, um, they get the notice, and by the time they're getting the notices, it's like they've gotten like three, one woman even told me ten. Officer Giddens was wonderful.
Giddens.
Giddens, I'm sorry. Um, he was, um, he was really great in being responsive to the, to the two that reached out to him. They both, both of these women told me that they worked with him and that he was very helpful, um, but my concern is a bunch of people that are not, you know, thinking to themselves that they should reach out to him for that kind of assistance. Um, so I don't know if there's something we can do about people getting a flurry of the tickets before they realize they have to modify their behavior in that area. Um, and then I think that at least one of them mentioned to me that, the, this was when I had ten, that the thing for her that was super confusing was she has children of a certain school age, I can't, I believe it was elementary or middle, but the hours of school are different for the elementary and the middle and the high school, so they don't always know what speed limit they're supposed to be adhering to, was the feedback I got. Um, I don't know if there's a way to somehow put more signage or to let people know where they are to kind of help with that a little bit.
I'm going to take it a little bit at first, and, and, uh, if that's okay, because I've driven through every ski, speed zone that we have with the cameras in the last two weeks. Um, every one of them starts with a blinking light and says the times. There was some in the middle that didn't have the daytime speed, you know, between the non-blinking lights, so if it's thirty or forty or whatever else. So I have talked to, to Mr. Giddens about making sure, and some of them are county roads, Forty-third in front of Braden Christian and that, but the speed signs are before them and after them. Ballard has it, um, different there, but again, it's eleven miles an hour over the posted speed limit. We know speed kills, and if you're going faster than you should, you gotta slow down. And I mean, eleven miles an hour isn't insignificant when you're talking about fifteen miles an hour, and, and I, I loved what some of the county commissioners said about if fifty-five thousand people are doing something wrong, we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater, you try to fix the problem. So what you're bringing up is a good point, but if somebody got ten tickets or ten speeding of eleven miles an hour over at the posted time, you know, you gotta slow down. And I know people are in a hurry and anxious and that, but I, I just, I've never apologized for trying to make people abide by the safety in a school zone, and maybe I have a different view, because I've seen the five-year-olds and the seven-year-olds that got hit by cars going too fast. And maybe I have a different view, but it's a view that I'm going to, you know, always support. I supported red light cameras for not the abuse of a right turn on red, but the, and not the way the cameras were before, but I have always supported the safety in the areas that will protect the lives of my children, my grandchildren, your children, your grandchildren. And so I just think that, you know, we gotta pay attention to where we are and slow down, you know? I, you know, and, and, and I know when we did the red light cameras, there was an opportunity, and our officers that, uh, researched them or reviewed them, looked at those things. They didn't give the silly, just because it was a ticket, you get money. They made sure that people, and I had one guy call me on that and say, you know, and it wanted the red light camera, or the, uh, school zone camera, and he was going, um, seventeen miles an hour over, and I told him, I said, well, it was during this time. And he goes, yeah, it was actually when the light was flashing, and, uh, he said, I paid it because I was speeding, and he goes, now I slow down, or I find a different route, you know? So I'm just saying, I'm not, but I mean, again, I've, I have a different view, and I probably will never change my view, because, um, sitting with there with those, you know, and it's just a, a process of my livelihood over the years and, and career.
I know. It was really more of the, just, you know, it's a new program, so this is just the thing I was hearing from people, and if it needs tweaking or if there's a way we can improve it, then
I agree a hundred percent, and that's why I said, let's get the speed limit signs, so
I think that will help.
it's, it's, you, you fix the problem, you don't try to just throw it out, in my opinion. So, Ms. Coachman?
Yes.
And we're not, I know we're not done with your stuff.
Oh, no.
Yeah, no, but it's, it's good to talk about it.
Well, yeah, if we're going to talk about it, then I need to.
Definitely want to. Um, it's the only time we can.
Uh, the one thing I want to ask was, prior to them being actually issuing citations, wasn't there like a warning period, and they were told, were they told then, you were speeding, blah, blah?
One of my funeral directors at the funeral home got the warning in our car, so it came right to me, and he was speeding, and, but it was a warning. So, you know, because it's right in front of the funeral home in front of Jesse P. Miller, and he got, we got the warning, so, you know, I said, next time you're paying it, you know, because it is in the vehicle you're in.
I'm just wondering if the mom was going that way, the, during that period, and she got those warnings, though?
I don't know, they didn't
You know, that, because, I mean, yeah, you know, but, but, and then the other was, I don't know if on the citations it has contact information to call, um, obviously Giddens to, you know, discuss anything, but I don't know.
He's given the, he's going to work within the benefit of the doubt.
Yeah.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I, I was extremely disappointed that the county just did away with it, because I, I, like I say, no one knows if they're in the county or the city, but I feel like the safety of our children, if that's what it, we gotta do, that's what we gotta do. And, um, I agree, I'm glad to hear that there are blinking lights at, at everyone. I think that's, that's the, the best part of it, because it's so hard to look for signs, because I don't have kids' school age anymore, and so I don't even, I didn't even know that they were, I thought they were just different schools at different times. So I'm glad to hear that there's a blinking light, but I mean, I stay committed to, to the whole thing, like the fact that you have ten tickets and you're at least ten miles over the speed limit, I'd be embarrassed to tell anyone. I think that's awful. Um, but anyhow, I, I, I just wanted to weigh in that I'm still committed to it. Maybe there is some tweaking that needs to be done, and if you had a law enforcement officer that was ticketing that person, they'd be getting points on their license and losing insurance. They had ten tickets in school zones.
A lot, twice, three times the money.
If I could, in her defense, she has modified her route because of the confusion. Um, so I don't think, I mean, to date, the people that have reached out to me have not expressed a desire to violate law, like they have said, I will modify my behavior. But I, I also have been, you know, like, they're just right, correct, like, it's stressful.
But at the same time, has she modified her route by going slower down that route? Or was she going entirely different?
She's not changing her behavior. She's still on the speed.
That's okay. It still makes the children safer.
All right, Ms. Coachman, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I just, now I can't really remember what it was. Um, I think my comment was, sometimes, I mean, the, the flashing lights are at the beginning and end or whatever. Um, some people probably are entering the roadway in between those blinking lights and sometimes not thinking, so I don't know if there's signage for cross streets to say, hey, during this time, don't
There is, there is, when you go down Seventh Avenue
Mm-hmm.
on Forty, uh, Forty-third Street, you come up to in the middle of that intersection, there is a sign that says, has all the time spelled out. So again, I think that's something we can do better, you know, and that's where, um, what do we call Jeremy now? Mr. Giddens?
Yeah.
I mean, he's not
Reserve officer.
Reserve officer, still officer. Yeah, Mr. Giddens. I wanted to, I want to, not captain, but you know, he
I know, I called him officer, and I'm like, no, he's not.
But, uh, Mr. Giddens is driving those. He's looking at them, and I was too, because I want him, you know, again, I don't want to do anything that's wrong or trying, we're not setting people up to get these tickets. We're trying to set them up to succeed, glass half-full, and don't speed in a school zone, you know? And, um, the, you look at a lot of school zones, even during the day when it's not flashing, there's kids out there walking from Jesse P. Miller to Shake Pit. There's kids walking to the daycare down the street, doing classes with their, the teachers off, you know, so a school zone should be a safe zone, and, and again, you know, we've got to protect that part of it, and if it, you know, And if it, you know, my buddy said, and I said, well, if you'd have got a ticket going that, you'd have got four points on your license. And then I think we had, we've had a couple of superspeeders that could have lost their license in it. And shame on them, going 30, 40 miles an hour over the speed limit, you know, posted at the time. You know, I mean, again, not that everybody makes a mistake and, you know, they realize it, but modify the behavior in a school zone or go a different way and then figure it out when the officer gets the ticket and you get points. Now, Chief.
I, you guys have done pretty good. You've earned your police commissioner badge today. You know, the only thing I'll add, and Jeremy left me some of his notes, but you guys have covered a lot of it. And, and the percentages have changed as we, we review our data weekly. But, you know, at the end of the day, these cameras are bringing down speeders. I don't mean taking down, but bringing down speed issues in our city. The research shows it's anywhere from 14 to 65%. I think we're trending right now at about 60%. It, it's, it has become a behavior modifier for us. And, and that's our goal, our, our goal all along. I probably get more calls than all of y'all. I get asked this every time I go and speak. And I, I always pose the question, okay, so we, we know that speed is what kills. We, we want to just ignore it. So are we going to ignore like people running red lights? Are we going to ignore people running stop signs? All of a sudden now, because we've applied a sanction, it, it's become, it's become a big deal. I'm going to stand by them. It, it's allowing our officers to turn their attention towards other issues, problem intersections, blocking the box issues, things such as that. And we did take care of, of some of the repeat offenders. They still got one citation, but, but maybe not some of the other ones. But my goodness, that's somebody who has a speeding problem, you know? When we look at some of the feedback we've gotten, I know we have six hearings coming up, so that'll be interesting. We have a magistrate that's going to help, help regulate and decide those things to, to codes for sharing theirs with us. But I'm not going to back away from it. I, I think, I think it's slowing people down in our city. And we all understand that that has become a problem nationwide. It, it lends itself to some of the road rage that we're seeing out there. And even, even for our own employees, as we all know.
That was going to be my question. Our employees, other municipality employees, other, what would you say, I guess, just say it, police department, sheriff's office, highway patrol?
We're, we're all being held accountable. I'm, I'm, I'm the bad guy with all this and I don't have a problem with it. Just because you're working, just because anything, you're, you're going to be held accountable for excessive speed. So, you know, we've all been up on the interstate and seen those lights behind us, those blue lights behind us for a lot less sometimes than 11 over, right? FHP, they'll, they'll, they'll get you for a lot less. I, I may know that. But, you know, I, I think 11 over in, in our neighborhoods and around our schools, it's, it's what needs to keep happening. And I appreciate that you guys are supporting this program and, and hopefully you stand by that.
No, good, great question. So thank you.
Yeah.
Moving on for the rest of
That, that actually is it. I, I am, I have a birthday today and, but you do not have to say.
We're saying
I am feeling very, very blessed and very loved. And I, I appreciate all of you guys.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I just echo everyone's sentiments on all of the activities that are going on, everything we are. And one of the things that, that the gentleman that did come up in public comment talked about three minutes. We're, three minutes, you know, you can go to five minutes, you can go to 10 minutes, you can go, but a message can be got to what they say in three minutes. A lot of councils and commissions are two minutes, you know? And when you look around, three minutes is a fair. And if there's two, different items, they can actually talk on different items at times. And if there's public hearing, you know, they can talk on their three minutes. But I think that's, you know, very fair. Some of the emails we get and asking to do a presentation for 10 minutes and that, I do sometimes have to say, you have your three minutes. And that's important because, you know, when things are said over and over and over again and they're not getting the answer they want because we're doing what we feel is right at the moment or by the law, just to say it again and again and again, isn't going to change some things. But no, it, I've always been, and one of the things that, that I will stand by is we have done the same thing since I've been mayor. Three minutes to everybody, no matter who you are. And, you know, again, it, it doesn't meet a narrative of some people. So, you know, that's just what we are. Couple other things that, that we are literally five months out from a storm. And three, through, over a three-month, four-month period, three devastating storms to our community. And we were five months out. There's some people in the community, as we know, still are having the major catastrophe storm areas, issues and dealing with them. But from what our staff and everyone has done through all of the departments, we're only five months out and we're in a good place. One of the things that really made me think about that from the standpoint of talking about a reserve fund that we have that is there to help do some of the things that we needed to do and then get the emergency purchase and hopefully get reimbursed, was a good thing the forefathers of this city had, had done and saved some of the money. There's some of our surrounding municipalities that unfortunately didn't have that fund and have the money to front it, where others came in and helped. But you go out to some of the beach communities still on this west coast of Florida, they still look in areas devastated because they didn't have the means or the wherewithal to actually get some of that stuff done that we did. And that's what makes me proud of our councils and all of the people before us and then definitely our staff to say, how did we set that up to succeed? Ms. Coker talked about recycling in different areas. You know, one thing that we did several years back is we really, really ripped off, I don't even want to say the Band-Aid, we ripped off the, the hemorrhaging from your neck going because it was something that was failing. And we said, we're going to try to fix it. And we're going to really working hard. We had a meeting with one HOA in her area that we talked to. And, you know, because we did have to eliminate GT Bray because of the misuse. The county eliminated GT Bray because of the misuse. And we tried to do things. We tried to educate. And this neighborhood said, well, you know, it's not there, you know, we don't, we want to do it. And Mr. Perry and I have been looking at a lot of different options and things to go. But, you know, we know that the people that want to do it, do it right. Others use it as a garbage can. And that wasn't working either. But we offered this community, and I went to another one after Ms. Coker, and I talked with this organization or this HOA, I went to another HOA and basically offered them, if they wanted to put one of those blue bins in their parking lot of their HOA, we would work it out. Funny thing is, neither one of them wanted to do that. So it's like, it's, we're trying things, but, you know, we'll get back to bringing things to this council that I think we're going to be very happy with when the time is right. That, you know, one of my promises always was, if we can bring back curbside recycling, we will. So, to be determined very soon. Wastewater, when you look at things and you go over things, you know, Mr. Perry and I and I, council, I guess, wouldn't be invited to be public information, but we're going to give a talk in a couple of weeks to a group that has been getting some wrong information from some of the publications that are out there. And we're going to face it and fix it. You know, people, oh, you shouldn't go talk to them, you shouldn't go to, I'll talk to anybody about it because I know what we're doing. You know, we know what we're doing. And are we going to be able to fix it today or tomorrow? No. But stay tuned for more on that too, about how things are going to be fixed. It's a, it's a, it's, it's fun because accomplishments. And we talk about generational things that are going to change. Well, some of the things we look at and we make a decision that may not be the most popular to the very few is stuff that we're going to get out. And it's, it's coming. I'm, you know, I get a little bit more excited, but some things have to take time and in cycles. Another thing with our employees, I've asked for, which is all public record, information on how we do things and pay and what we pay and contracts and all of that. And I would be, I would challenge the council to go and ask for this, Neil, so the same thing that I asked for in payroll in different areas of what some of our employees make and what they get with the package, you know? And it's not, it's about, you've got to work a business, you've got to work a process, you've got to work things. And, you know, when you do things, I would challenge you to look at those numbers, you know, and see what we're paying to some of our employees. Do we want to pay more? Absolutely. Since I've become mayor, some of the, the pay has gone up and it's with the council's support. And when you look at, when you're going through negotiations and doing things and you're up in the 30-plus percent, you know, I'm, I'm proud that when I started, we were at $45,000 starting pay for our police department. That officer that started at 45 is now at 67 plus in three years. That's just their salary. That's not all the benefits. Most of the benefits double what their salary is, what the city pays. So, you know, I want people to look at the facts and know what's happening. And, you know, again, can we give more? We always want to give more, but we also have to be good stewards of the money. So I, I would, you know, decisions have to be made and sometimes it's moments, it's timing and things will be right. And that's something that we've strived to do. And you want to go to every department and do the same thing. But moving on, any department heads that want to say anything?
Mr. Mayor, may I just say something? I appreciate you saying that. And, and as always, I'm so brief with what I say and I don't always clearly express what I'm thinking. I'm just saying that we, I'm just saying that we be mindful, continue to be mindful because we have been. I, I, it was just on my heart to say that. And it wasn't in any way to critique or, you know, criticize what we're doing because I think we're doing a great job. But I was just, I guess I was saying it so that we continue that.
No, and it wasn't anything, I was going to say that anyway because, you know, again, when, when stuff comes at us, I want to be able to say, do I feel like I'm doing right or wrong?
Right.
And if I'm doing something that may not be the, the most right, I want to try to fix it. And, but you also have to make decisions at times and move forward. So thank you. Mr. Perry, anything?
No, sir.
All right. Anyone else for the good? I would just like to, to mention again, please, if you haven't already got dates to the, the madam clerk there, that we want to look at those as much as possible because it's not, you know, if it needs to be on Monday morning at eight o'clock, Friday morning at four o'clock, we'll figure it out. Because I do want to get a lot of this information out there and have the workshops so we can continue the progress. Because we've got a lot of good progress. And legislatively, I look out there at Mr. Burton, you know, there's a lot of things going on legislatively, not only with CRAs and other things that we've got to figure out, you know, how we manage through things. And, you know, again, we've got to continue to do that, fix it, face it as we fix it and move forward. So hearing nothing else, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.